The City of Glendale Common Council is now in session. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
It's a deputy clerk to please call the roll.
Alder Vukovich. Alder Doherty is not here with us today. Alder Gailhard.
Here.
Alder Bailey.
Here.
Alder Schmelzling.
Here.
And Alder Shaw.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. All right, the next thing on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone that wants to speak on any non-agenda item this evening? I see one hand up in the back. If you please state your name and address and make sure you speak directly into the microphone. You've done this before, but it's a tricky microphone. You have to push them. I think it's muted.
There we go.
There we go.
Kathleen Carey, 5711 North Crestwood Boulevard. Just, I know we could have done this in C-click fix, but since the meeting was tonight, I thought I'd take care of it now. Could Public Works come and trim the boulevard on Crestwood and Raleigh and Crestwood and Kendall? Because you cannot see when you're turning if there's oncoming traffic because of the bushes that are hanging over. So, that's all.
The Director of Public Works is writing right now in his notebook, so. All right, thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak in public comment to a non-agenda item? Don't see anybody in the council chambers wanting to be recognized. If there's anyone joining us on the Zoom that would like to speak in public comment to a non-agenda item, you may unmute and state your name and address. All right, seeing no one wishing to speak to any agenda items, we'll move on then to the consent agenda. We have a number of items on the consent agenda this evening. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda as a block? Move Alderwoman Vukovich. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bailey. So is there any discussion on any of the consent agenda items? Seeing no one. Yeah, go ahead, Alderman Schmelzling. Did you want to speak to an agenda item or to a consent agenda item?
Yeah, just real quick on the newsletter. I just sent over minutes ago some feedback just about the amount of yard waste. I don't think we have that limitation. It's probably from a carryover from last year before we moved to John's on the three yards, but of course it is not a tree removal service. So just wanted to pass along that update that I noted. And then just always it's good to have URLs as well as the QR codes. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you for that change. We will make that. There is no limitation on yard waste now with John, so thank you.
No limitation?
Not on yard waste. That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Vukovich, yeah, go ahead.
Just, um, not that I want to pull it out, but just explaining the library payment. So people understand that, you know, this was a payment that we're doing and how that structured. I talked to Carl today and a couple of people reached out to me. So it's not, I'm not pulling it out. I just maybe seem like, why are we paying the full amount right now? And, you know, what's going on?
I'll ask the city administrator, Mr. Warby, can you explain that for us, please?
Yes, I'd be more than happy to do that. So under the agreement that was approved for the funding of the new North Shore Library in Bayside, Glendale was of course a part of that and all the communities agreed to make a contribution based on the current funding agreement for the operation of the library based on those percentages. So the payment that's in the accounts payable today represents the full payment for Glendale. The administrators from the communities agreed to make the full payment in September because it was felt that the project will be wrapped up and paid for by the end of December. So making incremental payments in September, November, and December was not felt beneficial. So that we decided to make the full payment in September for the construction of the library, noting that the final payments would be done by the end of the year. The payment is per the agreement, like we said, and the agreement also specifies that if there's any deductions in the contract for lower contract costs, lower contribution amount because additional donations or foundation payments are made or less interest for borrowing, then the municipalities would receive that credit back to us upon occupancy of the library building.
That's spelled out in the agreement that way.
That's all spelled out in the agreement that way. Correct.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question? Okay. Anything else discussing on the consent agenda? All right, we'll consider the consent agenda adopted without objection. Hearing no objection, we'll move on. Next item is unfinished business, and this is regarding a speed limit study on North Green Bay Avenue between West Brantwood Avenue and West Good Hope Road. And I will turn it over to the city engineer or city administrator.
So the common council previously approved a speed limit study on Green Bay Road from Silver Spring to Good Hope. There's a point at which it increases, which is at Brantwood from 35 to 40 miles an hour. Because of that and some other concerns, the common council asked for a speed study be done to determine what the speed limit of Green Bay Road should be. So as part of that, we contracted with Taddy for a speed limit study only in the 40 mile an hour speed limit area at two different cross-sections, both north and southbound. A speed limit is generally determined based on how 85% of people in the area drive, which is called the reasonable people, which is the 85% mark. I'm not looking at Mustafa because he's one of them. So that's generally how the speed limits are established for an area, which measures generally how people drive and feel about the road. They feel safe. They feel their judgment is good based on how fast they drive, not necessarily what the speed limit is. And the state law generally dictates that a speed limit should be established based on the 85% rule. So the speed limit measured the 85th percentile in the two different areas at 85.8 and 86.5 miles per hour. That's the 85% area, but the median speed limit was measured at 41 miles per hour. Oh, sorry, 40. Did I say 85? Sorry. 45.8 and 46.5. Sorry, not 80. And then the median speed limit was 41 miles per hour, which is really close to the posted speed limit. We had Clark Dietz, Mustafa and his group look at the speed study. Based on the data that is there, it looks like the safest speed limit for that area would be to maintain the 40 mile an hour speed limit. And I'll turn it over to our city engineer for any technical.
Microphone's not on. There we go.
At all. I think that having looked at the statistics, in my opinion, the 40 miles an hour as a speed limit on Green Bay is appropriate. I think that lowering it will be a, an exercise not resulting in slower speeds. I think that the look and feel of the roadway, the amount of cross-traffic and/or conflict points with intersections generally dictate how safe motorists feel in any given situation. And I think that I've spoken with our chief and Green Bay has not been one of those high concern through affairs in our city. So I agreed with Carl's suggestion that we should maintain the current speed limits, both 35 and 40.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from members of the council? I see Alderman Schmelzling as his hand raised. Go ahead.
Get myself off mute there. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So, yeah, I think, um, I guess I have a different perspective. I did a little research when I saw this come through in a much time because this just hit the packet. I think on Thursday, I knew the study was going on. I was very supportive of it being done, especially with the bicyclist incidents, the fatality there on Green Tree due to an over 85 percentile speeding individual. But when I did my little research and I just found that, let me bring up my notes. I didn't have much to go by, so I just worked from the highways.gov, the Speed Limit Setting Handbook from the, you know, the Fed. And it said that really you're supposed to consider not just the, you know, speed distribution of free-flowing vehicles, which is what I think the study did, but also road environment characteristics, geographic content, context. And then of course, you know, anything historical and crashes. So I did see in the packet there was some details about crashes in Glendale, but nothing specific on Green Bay. I don't think there's, there were many at the time because when I reached out to the chief and staff earlier. But generally speaking, I think there's some work to be done on, on that location. Looking back, you know, right now we don't have a bike trail. I know there's one plan there in the future, though right now there's, there's really no way of getting along that roadway with bicycle north of Green Tree. There's only a sidewalk on one part of the road there. I know that's also planned to go the rest of the way with that, you know, bike trail on the other side and all the way down Green Bay as well on the, on the west side with the multi-use trail then eventually on the east side. But right now I just know that, I live right around that corner and we do have jaywalkers, including myself, that, you know, cross the road where we shouldn't be to get to the park entrance. You know, the Brantwood crosswalk is uncontrolled. There is a median there. Or there actually is, is a median, but really you don't really walk over it. And then there's also in the same area where there's 40 miles per hour versus, you know, 35 to the south. Edward also has, you know, a median up there by, um, by Beth Israel. So I just feel like there's, and not to mention those, those people who, I don't know why they do it, but they do walk on the road north of Edward on the east side to get to synagogue. It's very risky. You know, they could go the other side of the road now. But I feel like there's, there are reasons to potentially drop that down to 35. We now have bus stops along the road as well. We never used to have bus stops, probably when this was set originally. So that's a characteristic versus environments. The curve right north of Silver Spring, I've had ASKT individuals from the synagogues say they have difficulty with visibility turning the corner. We asked them to, you know, cut back some brush, but at the same time it is a tough corner. So, and when I looked at the, the numbers for the Fed's context of the road, it's a, I'm assuming this is considered a suburban principal arterial. So it says it's acceptable at 30 and over. I don't think I'd be asking to get on to 30 because it is right now, you know, a 40, but I think we could take it back a little bit of a notch. And just for comparison, also in that little report of guidance that the Fed puts out there, if you get hit going 42 miles an hour, you have a 50% chance of living as a pedestrian. If you get hit going 32, you got a 75% chance of living. So I think, you know, a little bit of speed difference can make a big change. And as far as free-flowing traffic, I don't know about you, but my, my speed is set primarily by the speed limit. I'm not a good, um, probably candidate there because I probably would go too fast. I've done the Mario Andretti racing and I got it up to 152.4. You know, I think when you look at other comparable roads, you know, Silver Spring is a 30, Port Washington Road is a 35. When I compare this, I see a boulevard. I see it very much like Port Washington Road where I think 35 would be appropriate. And, and Good Hope is a 40. Let's not forget that. And people go like 60. So I guess I feel like if we could scale it back a little bit, it would also be consistent. So it'd be the same speed along the whole boulevard. There's not this portion where people are speeding up and slowing down. So I guess my general feel is I like 35 if I were to pick a number. Will it help slow people down? Perhaps. Perhaps not, but at least I think it would show that we're doing to, to really take those other aspects into consideration. All right, that's all I had to say. Thanks for listening.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Schmelzling. So our meeting tonight was noticed just for a review of the study. So if you'd like to submit a request to the city administrator to have that added to the next agenda, they could, they could prepare a memo to reduce, and then we could have the debate and discussion as a council about the reduction in speed. Sure, but yeah, we're not noticed for that tonight, but I appreciate you giving that additional detail.
Yeah, the detail was wonderful in the speed study, so thank you. I don't know if any of those other aspects were taken into consideration. I think it was just the speed study that really wasn't a recommendation from Taddy on what the speed limit should be. So I guess that's kind of where my head was at if we were going to take the next step. Thank you.
Yeah, Taddy doesn't really make any recommendation. They simply provide the data. It was sort of, Steve, the, the road conditions that you discussed kind of lowered it from that 46 or 45 of where the speed study came in to give that recommendation of 40. That's kind of how we came to that 40 recommendation based on the factors that you just discussed, but.
But his, his bringing up the Port Washington Road is a 35 and that is wider with less, with less obstructed view in the medians and, you know, right next to the highway, and yet it's only 35. Green Bay has some, you know, I know coming around by the Spring House and the synagogue just north of it, you know, unless the trees get trimmed back, you know, it's a, it's dangerous pulling out of that little condo community and where the ASKT synagogue is. So I could see a reduction, maybe five miles an hour, down to 35. And also maybe some signage also reminding people that there are hidden entrances in front of them. I think that also could be helpful on the southbound side. But we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Absolutely. I mean, there's no sort of engineering reason not to drop it by five.
Right.
There isn't, so don't. What our administration and engineering, we thought that the current situation did not warrant an emergency.
Right.
In other words, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we were just wanting to make sure that people weren't a lot more reckless than they appear to be.
Right, right. If it were 40 and, you know, the speed study had come back and the average was 51, right, I get it. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, thank you. We'll move on. Our next item now is moving on to our new business, and we do have a review of the August 9th and 10th flooding event and the city actions. And I know this, the city administrator has some slides.
One second.
This is my third presentation today about flooding.
Okay.
This morning at MMSD, there was a whole recap of flooding. At the ICC meeting this afternoon, there was a whole recap of flooding, so.
I share request?
Yeah, she clicked you.
All right, so in August 9th and August 10th, the city experienced a significant flooding event. First thing I'll do here is I just want to thank everyone in the community for their patience and understanding during this event. There was a lot of people that did a lot of work to help themselves and the city out. I didn't lift one ounce of anything, mainly our public works and our contractors. And the county did most of the work to help things, so I just want to give a big thank you to everybody. So what we experienced was a thousand-year flood. That doesn't mean that's a flood or a rain event that occurs every thousand years. It's got a 0.1% chance of occurring on an annual basis, and that's what we saw on August 9th and 10th. And everyone knows what happened, so I won't really describe that as the National Weather Service does right here. So I didn't want to put all the rain totals up there. I got the closest from what we had, which was 11.71 inches of rain during this period in northern Milwaukee. I know there were certain areas that reached up to 14.
So the rain gauge in Glendale and Silver Spring was the 11.71. About two miles west, there's another rain gauge on the north side of Milwaukee that was 14.55. So we were, Glendale was in that somewhere between 11.7 and 14.5.
And as you can see from the map on here, the red area and obviously the darker red area is where the majority of the flooding occurred, and it's right in the north shore of the Milwaukee area, which will lead to a later point that 53209 was the second hardest-hit zip code of anyone in the area. So at about 2:30 in the morning when the flooding was occurring, initiated some conversations about public utilities and storms and making sure the cities, roadways and utilities were being taken care of and handling the capacity. So thanks, Charlie, for talking to me at 2:30 in the morning. He was already up as well, too. Mine was because my basement was flooding. His was because he was looking out for the city, so thank you. And then on Sunday, that same day, we opened up communication between city leaders to make sure the automatic districts and travel and all that stuff was occurring and allowed us to identify some trees that were down and some roadways that needed to be closed. So thanks, everyone, for helping facilitate that communication on Sunday. And then through the day on Sunday, for the majority of the day, public works crews were called in to monitor the level of the river. We closed flooded roads. Bender was, I think, the main one that was closed due to, due to rain.
Port Washington Road also.
Port Washington Road was supposed to. Yep, that is correct. We removed some damaged trees and branches from there right away. I know there was a couple of crews that did that, and then we began our damage assessment generally of the city on Sunday. I think the biggest taxing area was the fact that I-43 southbound was flooded and closed, which diverted a lot of traffic through Glendale. And that's a big thank you to the Glendale Police Department had to divert a ton of traffic. And then people got wise to the fact that they weren't really moving anywhere when they got off at Silver Spring. So then they started getting off at Port Washington and other way and taking Green Bay. So it was, it was kind of a mess for a little bit on Sunday, particularly for the traffic.
It was I-43. They directed them onto Silver Spring and down Port Washington Road, which of course we had closed for the same reason they closed the freeway.
Yep.
So kudos to our police for directing them through, I believe through Whitefish Bay, wasn't it?
This is some of the area-wide damage assessment numbers. Of course, these aren't finalized, but it looks like over 4,500 homes were assessed for damage, and I believe this is simply in Milwaukee County. 51 homes were destroyed. I know for a fact we had at least one in Glendale that was destroyed, maybe more. $33 million simply in home damage. I would, I'd like to know what the car damage vehicle is just by looking at the state fair and other apartment buildings, but I couldn't find an accurate figure of car damage. During this time, 38,000 homes lost power for an average of 10 hours. That was simply Milwaukee County. I heard the number was nearly 80,000 for the entire regional area. Right now we have a total estimated damage of $76 million. And how we got to all these numbers was Chief Fugman, the fire department, and everybody working with the Milwaukee County Emergency Management Department, mainly headquartered here. It's at Station 82. They did take up a lot of our parking for a week or two. Luckily, they gave us free pizza one day to help make up for that. So it was definitely a good coordinated effort led by police and fire to try to get to all these numbers that you see on here. So we tried to find an updated figure on this, but the, this is the damage assessment or the number of people that called the 211 emergency number. It has a date on here of 8/11. Chief Fugman and I tried to find an updated number. We couldn't, so this was possibly, you know, 48 hours into the, the, the storm, after the storm.
I have a map that was distributed at MMSD this morning.
Okay.
That is a combined of the 211 reports as well as separate reports to MMSD, which are specifically just backups into basements, whether it's sump or sewer or flooding in basements. So that's all that, they don't engage in any of the other stuff, but if, if there's a backup into the basement. So I can get you that map. And what you'll find in the other map is that you can't read the word Bayside because there were so many cases in Bayside. And in Glendale, you don't see a whole lot on here, but there's a whole lot in Glendale.
Yeah, there's a whole lot in here, and I guess this just shows the area south of Glendale and in Milwaukee in our area was very hard hit, which leads it to 53209. Now, that's not all. Glendale was the second hardest-hit zip code. I forget what the hardest-hit one was. But this just shows you, if you were north of Milwaukee or in the northern part of Milwaukee, you were likely a victim. So after the storm on Monday, when staff came in, we met every day to talk about what happened the previous day, what work got done, and then what the plan of action was for that current day and days to follow. We also coordinated and Abby did a very good job of posting as much information as we could to the public to keep everybody updated on exactly what the plan of action was. You know, and Abby, Emily, and specifically Chi took thousands, that's probably an exaggeration, hundreds of phone calls and emails regarding, when is my stuff going to be picked up? When's this? When's this going to happen? So again, thanks to everyone that took all the phone calls. And obviously people weren't always at their best during that time. And, you know, we maintained our composure to try to deal with people at their worst time, so. Next thing is I'll briefly talk about, you know, the storm cleanup. And this was sort of the biggest and obviously the most expensive effort that really began Tuesday after the storm with our waste hauler. They started out with a vehicle a day collecting traffic or collecting damage. And then that increased as the day went on and then in through the weekend to try to pick up as much as possible. As the week went on, more people accumulated additional items at the street, which led the city towards the end of the week to hire a number of contractors to assist with collection. As you can see them on there, Wallace Tree Care, Valani Landscapers, Exquisite Landscaping, and Globe Contractors. And that was a combination of contractors with specialized equipment that normally take up trees and stumps to grab a bunch of garbage at one time. And then a lot of people just in the street on the ground, moving items around and putting them into vehicles in order to collect them. The one big saver here, and a big thank you is owed to Milwaukee County. They gave us five dump trucks with five people and drivers for five days. If you calculate the hourly rate of an average employee and the dump trucks, it was about a $24,400 savings. And essentially what they did is we loaded the trucks up. They dumped them here at the public works yard, and then we loaded them up into the dumpsters and took them out. So without Milwaukee County, we would not have got through this as quickly as possible.
I reached out to the county executive and the director for the county department of transportation and invited them to our next meeting so we can thank them in person, so.
Yep, that's definitely appropriate. Our public work staff was also heavily involved, too. They did the same thing in addition to coordinating the collection, sort of directing all the contractors and the staff of where to go. And then everything was dumped right up here, and it all had to be loaded into dumpsters. And there was about six dumpsters up there at the time. And there was many times where John's disposal couldn't take the dumpsters out fast enough that they just kept getting full and the garbage just had to sit there. So that's how much garbage that we collected. That's how fast we were able to load it up there. So that's mostly everything. So the next couple of slides, I'll just here give some examples of what the city looked like. And there were certain areas, particularly in District 2, where you walked down a number of streets, and this was every single house. So there was hundreds and hundreds of houses with this much garbage sitting out there. And amazingly, with all the efforts of everybody, it took about a week to collect everything.
It's no week. It was about two weeks total.
Correct. Yeah, the first week and then the second week was the main effort after most people had it out there. So I turned it lead that to a week. This is an example of some of the specialized equipment and grabbers we had collecting stuff. This equipment isn't necessarily supposed to be used for picking up storm damage. It's for tree and landscape removal. So we sort of adapted some of these efforts to load it as quickly as possible into these trucks. I will play a quick video. This is one of our contractors, again, loading the stuff. This is on Bender Road here. And then you'll see a county truck come on. I won't show you the whole thing, but then this contractor will load their vehicle, and then they will load the county truck. And this is sort of the effort that went on for days and days and days with loading stuff into the vehicles. The second video here, this is just a few seconds. This is our public works yard. As you can see, this pile of debris just gets dumped here. And then there is a bunch of dumpsters that you can see are full, and our crew is sitting there loading them up in order to get loaded out to the landfill. So how much garbage do you think we loaded up in two weeks and took out to the landfill? So we had 628 tons of garbage were collected and brought to the landfill, which equals over 1.25 million pounds of garbage that was removed. That does not include all of the scrappers that took, all of the dishwashers and refrigerators, and then all of the electronics collection. And there was a lot of it that was brought to our public works yard. We had to make multiple runs. If you equate it to about 4,000 homes in the city of Glendale, now 4,000 homes weren't damaged, but if everybody had damages, about 310 pounds for each house. So really the final and unknown aspect of this is, is what will FEMA, what will the federal response? You know, the city of Glendale, along with many other businesses and homes, had damage. Some covered by insurance, some not covered by insurance. The governor submitted a request to FEMA to cover some or hopefully most or if not all of the, part of the damage declaration. So we've made a request for federal aid. The status of that right now is not. The status of that right now is not known.
I drafted a letter on behalf of the ICC and all twenty members of the ICC, so the county executive and the mayors and village presidents of the nineteen municipalities all signed on to that. And that specific ask in that letter was to reimburse from FEMA the municipalities for the cost of hauling away the garbage. And I will say, having talked with a number of my colleagues today at the ICC meeting, we went above and beyond what many communities did. We picked up the the debris at people's curbside and did not make them haul it away. A lot of municipalities provided a whole bunch of dumpsters across their municipality, but you had to haul your stuff to dumpsters. We did not do that. You know, we didn't need, you know, people loading wet soggy carpet and pad into mom's minivan and taking it somewhere and, you know, being forced to dump it into a dumpster. We tried to pick everything up at the curb. And most municipalities in the region did not go to the extent that we did. So, kudos to Carl and to Charlie and the staff for the the very comprehensive plan that, you know, had to evolve. We had to see how much there was going to be, and then they found ways to add more and more people and to get the debris. We were finished entirely within three weeks because we stopped as of Labor Day, which was three weeks, Labor Day weekend, which was three weeks. So, any other comments from members of the council? I will just say, I don't know which one, whether it be Charlie or Carl, but have you heard from Milwaukee County OEM because they are the ones collecting the data from the municipalities about our costs? You, Chief?
I have. Yeah, I've been, I reported that to them.
Okay.
And that's, we completed that, I believe, it was a week ago. Or it was either right before Labor Day was the deadline or the week of Labor Day. But yeah, that's been submitted to them.
Okay. So, FEMA's new procedure is they're going to work with county and or local emergency management, which in this case is Milwaukee County OEM, to collect all of that data. So, Milwaukee County will be sort of the intermediary that collects everything and presents it all then to OEM. So, if we get all of our receipts and all of our totals to Milwaukee County, they're the one.
We've probably submitted it a dozen times to them. So, we've we've had it all. We had a couple damaged items. We had a squad car that got run over with water and then a street or a traffic signal the same as well, too. So, it's part in our cost, too.
Any other, Alderman Schmelzing, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just want to ask, I I didn't see in the packet like a rundown of what all those costs have been or what they've tallied up to be. I know this is a one, one in a thousand probability event, so I think we did what we needed to do. But just be nice to have an idea of that and maybe a future report out. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. We are, we are right now working on tallying all those numbers together. I can tell you, the tipping fees alone, just for the landfill, was seventy-five thousand dollars. We had a police car that was damaged. Luckily, it was covered by insurance and then a twenty thousand dollar repair to a traffic signal. But the contractor costs for all the hallway damages is the main cost, and we are starting to put that together. So, we'll have that in a report for you.
You have invoices, you probably don't even have all the invoices yet, do you?
I don't, no, Charlie, would you? No, we do.
They haven't billed us. Okay. So, at some, yes, Alderman Schmelzing, at some point, you know, maybe a meeting or two in the future, once all the invoices are come in, they can put together that total for us.
Yep, but I'll I'll commend everyone. I think a lot of us got basement issues. And yeah, I was one of the individuals that was very pleased that my carpet got picked up very quickly. Everything seemed to get taken away, and I've I got some great feedback. And you probably don't always hear the good news, but I I got some good feedback from people that said they were surprised that they got it out there and it was gone as quickly as it was. So, and I think, you know, some people asked, like, can we take it somewhere? And I said, don't, you know, it, we're taking care of it. We're gonna, you don't have to wait for a special pickup and such. So, I think people were very appreciative of that. But now, of course, you know, it's back to normal. So, if I find I have to tear out my remaining carpet, it'll be a special pickup.
And any other comments from members of the council? All right. Thank you, appreciate that. All right, our next item is the Glendale Youth Council appointments. As you know, we created a youth council back in the summer, reached out to the schools, so multiple schools, the the private schools and public schools. I know the alders all sent it out as well. Applications come in. I want to thank the members of the council for conducting interviews. You do have in your packets a memo from me indicating recommendations for appointments. This is our first youth council. We've never done this before. We have some models, Oak Creek, Wabatoosa, West Dallas, City of Milwaukee. But we've got some models to look at, but basically, this is the inaugural group. You're kind of our guinea pigs. You'll be able to be the ones to sort of set the standard for what future youth councils do. So, I'm going to ask the individuals if they can stand when I call your name, just so we can recognize and see who you are. But my recommendations for the positions are for president of the youth council, Maya Kayat. All right. For clerk, Ashlyn Gannfield. For District One, Paula, is it Arias? Arias, okay. District Two, Lucy Domnitz. Lucy is not here, okay. District Three, Riley Kruger. District Four, Reese Couch. District Five, Tristan Latona. And District Six, Dylan Lawrence. Okay, so, thank you for your applications. I know I had a chance to interview some of you, alders did other interviews. Can I get a motion from a member of the council to approve these appointments at the Glendale Youth Council?
Moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Shaw, seconded by Alderman Gelhard. All those in favor of?
Discussion?
Oh, yeah, discussion, sorry. All right, you you can all be seated now.
Thank you.
We'll make you stand the whole time we talk. Alderwoman Vukovich.
Because I'm me.
No.
I take this personally, okay? I have an issue with the way this was put together in the sense of you gave it to schools, but there are so many people, especially who work, that did not see it in that timeframe. This is summer. So, a lot of kids did not see it. Some people were at camps, some people are, you know, doing other things and did not see it. And I also think that they should vote for their own president and clerk because that's the way the common council does it. You appointing is not necessarily democratic. Just wanted to give those two things because who knows? There could have been somebody else who, and I'm not saying anything about the two, the clerk and the president, it's just that this is how we handle things. We vote on it, nobody picks us, and they have to figure it out. So, those are the two things. And I'm especially, especially on the timing of getting people in just for the simple fact it was during summer. And even though you sent it out to emails or whatever, yeah, nobody looks at that stuff. They skip all over the stuff. I worked, I was on the school board for years. I heard people say, well, I don't listen or look at this stuff until I get my my list of supplies. So, I I just wish we would have at least tried to do that this month where people are paying more attention to what's going on in schools.
Thank you. You and I have had that conversation, and I I do recognize the concern. In terms of them picking their own leadership, I think in future years, we could absolutely, once the council is established and and, you know, has a track record of a number of months of meeting, you know, next year, their group could very easily elect their their president and their clerk. So, I I do agree with that. And as for the communication issue, it can be, it doesn't matter when we do it, there's always going to be people that say, well, I didn't know about it because people don't read their emails, they don't look at the website, they don't look at social media, or they scroll past things. Like, I hear that complaint about everything. I can't tell you how much social media, how much effort we did around the garden, the debris pickup, and I still have people telling me in the last few days, well, I didn't know. I I think that there's no way we can ever reach everybody. I understand your concern, and I told you this when we had our conversation. I think that the I didn't know about it is something you're going to hear if you, like, had people driving around through the neighborhoods with loudspeakers blasting that they're doing something, you're still going to have people say they didn't hear it.
Want to push back that the odds of them hearing it during the school district and the school is a lot greater than when everybody's on vacation. So, I get that nobody's ever going to know it, but when you are on spring break, vacation, people are going to colleges and doing college tours and all that during the summer, the odds of them hearing about it when we're in school is a lot greater. I know everybody won't hear it, but I bet you it's a lot greater than if we are doing it in the middle of the the school board or the summer.
And I think for next year, we'll look at taking applications probably toward the end of April, beginning of May, and be able to advertise before the end of the school year. Yeah. All right, any other discussion or comments? All right, we do have a motion in a second. We call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the appointees to the first ever Glendale Youth Council, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Congratulations, you all. We will be talking with you all afterwards, so, yeah. Go ahead, Alderwoman.
It will be, you will be the chair of them, right? I just, because there's no establishing in this memo, so I'm just making sure that everybody knows that you will be the.
I will be mentoring them, along with the help of the assistant to the city administrator, Ben Poloney. I will continue probably through about the end of this year. And then at that point, Mr. Poloney will be their their mentor. So, they, I I think we, we'll work together, Ben and I will work together on on getting them started. And then after that, you know, Ben will take over as their mentor.
Staff is working on some official framework for how they are to operate, what sort of their modus operandi is based on some of the documents that are out there from Tosa and
Be able to rely on their alder, whoever their alder is.
That was one of the reasons why we asked each of the alders to talk to the candidates. All right. Yes, ma'am. Alderwoman Shaw, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work in doing this as well.
Welcome. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our next item, which is a proclamation. We get this every year from the railroads, C tracks, think trains. There's a week coming up, so we approve this pretty much word for word almost every year. So, can we get a motion to adopt the proclamation? Moved by Alderwoman Vukovich, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Gelhard, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the National C tracks, Think Train Week in Glendale, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a competitive funding agreement with MMSD for the 2025 Private Property Inflow Infiltration Reduction Program. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Warwick, but I will just give a report. I chaired the committee at MMSD that heard this this morning, and we did, and and we did refer it to the commission for approval, so. And I did disclose that while this is my neighborhood, I am not scheduled until 2029, when I am no longer a commissioner at MMSD. So, you know, so, I'll turn it over to Mr. Warwick.
Thank you. So, we're asking the council to consider approval of just over one million dollars with MMSD for the 2025 PPI program. It's a lateral replacement program to reduce infiltration into the sanitary sewer system. Under this agreement, MMSD covers 100% of the cost. This program is estimated to replace thirty-seven laterals in the Crestwood subdivision. Due to the age and condition of Crestwood, it's estimated that this is maybe between a four and a five-year program. There are a number of houses, and there is a map on here which dictates and shows all of the homes that requested to participate in the sewer lateral replacement program. Essentially, we will start on the east side of Crestwood and complete as many as we can and then work our way west. We may hopefully come to you again in 2025 or in 2026. If there's additional funds from MMSD, we're going to continue to ask and hopefully condense this four- or five-year program into a three- or four-year program if possible. Anything to add, Mustafa?
No, I think that we currently have a list of over seventy properties that signed on. The funding only allows for the initial thirty-five, thirty-seven. However, we are working very closely with MSD staff, and they're encouraging us to come back to commission in the third quarter and see if we can, in fact, respond to all seventy or so individuals or individual property owners. So.
That's a hundred and seven.
This, the 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 total is one seventy, but this first round, so we were thinking of dividing one seventy into a five-year program. So, the, and then working with the folks at the district who run this program, we were alerted of the possibility of additional funding since not every community, believe it or not, in the service area takes advantage of this of this funding. It's on a first-come, first-served basis, and and it's a programmed across the twenty-six communities. And yet, we are one of the, a handful that that take advantage of this.
I I think the confusion was the yellow section, he has the map up now, I believe the yellow section is about seventy homes. And that would be.
That was the first.
It's fifty-nine, so yeah.
It's fifty-nine, okay.
Yeah, so year one is the thirty-seven, which is the orange, the yellow section is fifty-nine, then forty-five and C, D is thirty-five, and then E and thirty-one. So, the proposal would be for the construction and construction engineering of the initial thirty-seven. Hopefully, we could get more if the pricing comes in appropriately. There is a design engineering change order that's on the agenda coming up next. We've already designed seventy.
Correct.
Homes to be ready for 2027 then. That change order is to add, I believe, thirteen.
Right.
Seventeen, sorry, to that number. So, we'll have eighty-seven designs, so we'll have two years' worth of work designed with payment from MMSD for the Crestwood subdivision.
All right, are any questions for staff? All right, can we get a motion then to approve the agreement with MMSD for the Private Property Inflow Infiltration Reduction Program?
Oh, moved.
Moved by Alderman Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second, and by, I'm going to give this one to Alderwoman Shaw since it's her district. Let's see, any discussion on this? Hearing now, and all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Next then is the Construction Engineering Services. So, this was just explained to us. Can we get a motion then to approve the 2026 Glendale PPI lateral replacement construction phase engineering services for one thirty-nine and six ninety? Moved by Alderwoman Shaw, is there a second?
Second.
Second, second, Alderman Gelhard, any discussion? All those in favor of approving, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. All right, I think that concludes all of our business, right?
One more.
There's one more.
Change order.
Yeah, there's a change order then for, can you explain this one to us?
Yeah, so this was money that was approved by MMSD. The the original scope of the design for Crestwood was to design seventy sanitary sewer laterals. Due to cost savings, we were able to get eighty-seven designs, so this would hopefully get us year one and year two done, all designed, ready to go. So, the time either 2026 or 27 rolls around, we have eighty-seven to to work on.
We get a motion then to approve the change order?
I'll make it.
Moved by Alderman Schmelzing, and I heard a second first from Alderwoman Vukovich. So, any discussion? All those in favor of approving, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
And just a reminder, Mr. Mayor, the, all of the contracts that we put in front of you are 100% covered by the original funding agreement that you just approved by MMSD. So, it's of absolutely zero dollars for our city.
Okay, thank you, appreciate. All right, we'll now move on to commission committee, board, and staff reports. As I indicated already, the MMSD met this morning, and we did approve this project moving forward, so it'll go to the full commission in two weeks. This afternoon at the ICC meeting, the bulk of the conversation at the ICC meeting was around the flood and the flood cleanup. There was a presentation by Milwaukee County Office of Emergency Management. There was also a brief conversation led by a representative from Milwaukee who was representing the mayor, talking about Milwaukee's legislation to get approval for red light cameras. It would only be for the city of Milwaukee, it would only be for a city of the first class. I know we had this conversation when there was legislation a couple years ago. I personally do not support them. I think that they are a violation of civil liberties. You catch a car's license plate number, you don't catch a driver. As I explained today to the group, my wife and I and my daughters were on a spring break trip in Paris. As I explained today to the group, my wife and I and my daughters were on a spring break trip in Paris. My son had my car. He was in Chicago and he got a red light. Violation from turning right on red and where it was not approved. And I got the ticket in the mail sent to me because I'm the owner of the car. And I filled out their affidavit and I attached copies of my plane tickets and my hotel showing I was out of the country. And they said, we don't care. It's a private company that contracts and so if the city of Milwaukee wants to do that, that'll be in the city of Milwaukee. It will not be. I'm certainly never going to put it before this council as long as I'm the mayor. I think it's a violation of civil liberties. I would much rather pay for the officers and put them on the street and have them catch people where they're talking to people. Where it's a person talking to a person and giving a citation. I don't believe that we replace police officers with cameras that. Basically have tickets to license plates. I I don't support that at all. And honestly, for the millions of dollars it's going to cost to install all these cameras, it's 15 aldermanic districts and each one of them gets five and the city that's 75. It's going to cost them millions of dollars to install cameras. They should hire police officers. I've spoken my piece. So that that came up today. Yeah, yeah. So the one last thing I wanted to just take a moment and wanted to ask the deputy city administrator. If you could join me up here. She has just completed 10 years with the city of Glendale and I have her 10 year pin.
Are you going to cry?
She cries every day on her walk in. Yeah.
And the final thing on my report is normally the North Shore Fire Department would be meeting tomorrow morning and I would invite you all to attend our meeting. But we are meeting now on the 30th. I think it has something to do with the budget not being ready for us yet. So. The North Shore Fire Department is not meeting tomorrow. So that includes concludes my report and I will now turn it over to staff. I'll start with the city administrator.
The only report I have is we have a rescheduled community picnic for our 75th anniversary is this Wednesday, September 10th. We have music performance beginning at 6:30 till 9. We will have food trucks beginning at 4:00 PM. And food will of course will be served at the Spurker Outdoor Oasis.
All right, thank you. City attorney?
Oh, September 15th, the judge has finally scheduled. A oral decision to be given in the placement of the offenders that were. Housed on Silver Spring Drive. So we'll have an answer one way or another by the time we have our next meeting.
Thank you. Deputy clerk, anything to report?
I would like to recognize you for servicing 10 years within the city of Glendale.
Ooh, I've also, thank you. That was sneaky. The only time I cry is if something happens to my dog. All right, chief, anything?
Nothing to report.
All right, Alderman Vukovich?
Not a committee report, but I want to thank the. North Shore Fire Department for having me at, I did a ride along with them last Friday. I am a jinx. For myself, because this is my fourth or fifth ride along since I've been an alder and they had one call. Usually they have anywhere between 5 and 12. They always only have one call when I am there. So I don't know how to look at it that I save the world when I'm there or I go there and spend time from 8:30 until 3:00 and. But thank you for hosting me.
All right, Alderman Dougherty is actually out of the country, so he's excused tonight. Alderman Gelhard?
Nothing tonight.
Alderman Bailey?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Schmelzing?
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right, and Alderman Shaw?
No report, but I'd like to say congratulations to both individuals for 10 years.
No, thank you. Jessica says thank you as well, so. All right, that concludes all of our business. I would now entertain a motion to adjourn. Move by Alderman Vukovich, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gelhard. All those in favor of adjourning, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And adjourned. So.